I want to call the March 20th, 2023, where you need a varsity council to work. If you stand with the pledge of allegiance following the sentence.
I can have.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Mr. Martin. Problematism, March 14th, period of review minutes and March 14th, word session minutes. You had this before you go here motion to approve. Go here second. Motion filed in second, all those in favor say aye. Miss Thang, Miss Bean, Miss Tran.
May I do not attend the meeting and decide that my concern is the council ordered to have a new board manual in DMO that we don't have the legal authority for. It's what's planned as a just a recommendation, but the board will take it.
Ms. Quan?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn. Swear in of Associate Judge Tom Kirk. We did an informal one, now we'll do a formal. And if you do this just right, you can cut me out of the picture and no one will know. I state your name.
Aye, Tom Kirk, right.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without respect to person and do equal rights.
Without respect to person and with equal rights.
To the poor and the rich.
To the poor and the rich.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
And perform all the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
Of the city of Mauro.
The city of Mauro.
To the best of my skill and knowledge.
To the best of my skill and knowledge.
In accordance with the charter and all applicable laws.
In accordance with the charter and all applicable laws.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And I will well and truly account.
And I will well and truly account.
For and pay all public monies.
Will pay, will pay, will pay all county money.
And property.
And property.
That may come into my hands.
That may come into my hands.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am not the office holder.
That I am not the office holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Any foreign state.
Any foreign state.
By which the laws of the state of Georgia.
By which the laws of the state of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding.
I am prohibited from holding.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am qualified to hold the office of municipal court judge.
That I am qualified to hold the office of municipal court judge.
Of the city of Mauro.
Of the city of Mauro.
According to the constitution.
According to the constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of Georgia.
And the constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Following the agenda of our meeting, Lieutenant Beaver and Sergeant Glover, five-year service in the city of Mauro.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've had the honor and privilege to work with Lieutenant Beaver and Sergeant Glover since they came to our department over five years ago. Both of them are outstanding officers and a great asset to the city of Mauro and the police department. Congratulations on your five-year. This goes to both of you, I'll read the plaque once. Five-year work anniversary presented to Matthew Beaver and Christopher Glover for five years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Mauro and the Mauro Police Department for the mayor, council, and the police department. Thank you.
Can you come up on the stage up here? We've got a couple of gifts back there. Come on, let's make it really hard for them to stay in there. You guys want to bring your family up with you?
They bad, yeah.
They bad. Give us the full monkey there, there you go. Very nice. Thank you.
You know, good with the word, this is recognition of a Mauro standing Mauro resident. This is developed by a spouse who is ninety-five years old. And not only at ninety-five, she is going to live with family outside the city. So we have a small gift of appreciation for many, many years of service. And, what was I saying? Seventy years, she's ninety-five years old, that's a very long time to be here. And I have a small thing I'm going to read just a portion of it. She was born in Singapore, grew up there. Her father was a medical doctor. And he had a problem with, uh, uh, seeing. She worked in the lunchroom at school and served attendance at the church. She worked in the border requirement. And she married in nineteen fifty-three. She graduated from the University of Texas in Austin. Grew up in Oklahoma, Texas. He was interested in self-employment, started a company business. Basically, he's like the rest of us, he gave her up tough. She has a brother that she was going to join and is barely living, so he left after six months. They have two children. The daughter who lives in Birmingham and her son who recently moved to Charleston. She has a sister in Louisiana who's ninety-seven. Her husband recently passed away at age one hundred and two. She is a member of our achieving. Melba can do it at ninety-five, there's no excuse for a member of you not being in there this Sunday. Every Sunday, they're already here except for before we have, um, she's going to move to an assisted living in Birmingham and, uh, we're really getting pissed, so without further than.
We can stand up front too, because you're going to stand up there a little bit tall. How about that? Perfect. And this one is meant, so, by the mayor of the city of Mauro, Georgia. I, John Lampel, mayor of the city of Mauro, Georgia, do hereby proclaim, Melba Bossi as an outstanding Mauro citizen. May this outstanding citizen be afforded every courtesy as a goodwill ambassador for Mauro, Georgia, in her travels to other states, to nations beyond the borders of the United States of America, and wherever she may hereafter travel reside. Thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you, man. This is for you.
She's going to need some help carrying all this.
I got the tissue.
Touchy drink, come on up here, because these are her friends, people who have been with her for a very long time. Family too, family too, don't be shy. Thank you. And they're going to take some pictures, so anybody, friends and family, these times, these awards mean a lot in terms of the pictures and the people that are in there, so do not feel shy, you know, just come up.
Soon as Dorothy turn around.
Dorothy. Oh, she's wiping her eyes.
That's a long time. In this case, next is going to be the promotion of Lieutenant Kevin Todd.
You can see her knife.
Kevin Todd is a great example of a strong work ethic and perseverance. He's the first person we hired in Mauro Fire Department with no fire or EMS training in ten years, when we hired him in twenty seventeen. Came to us as a, from a completely different world, but he quickly graduated from Fire Academy and enrolled at EMT School, advanced EMT School. Since that time, he's taken numerous classes to get his firefighter three certification, which you have to have with a lieutenant. He's a great employee and we're glad he's on our team. I do want to recognize his family that's with us tonight, his parents are here, and his wife Katie and their five kids. That's impressive, that's something. They live on the other side of Athens, so they had quite the trek to get over here, so we're just happy they all made it tonight. I'm going to turn the program over to Deputy Chief Bossi this time for the promotion ceremony.
Good evening, mayor, council, thank you for having us and welcome, citizens and especially family and friends of everybody who came to celebrate all the different things tonight. We appreciate you coming out and being a part of everything. So I get the honor of presenting Lieutenant Todd with this certificate of promotion. But before we do that, I did want to take just a minute to explain how we get here. So maybe you heard this a couple of weeks ago, but it's definitely worth reiterating to those who don't understand maybe what this is. But the rank of lieutenant is not anything that is assigned or given, it is a hundred percent earned through a lot of hard work for the things that candidates go through to get there. The average hours, just under about two hundred extra hours of training over and beyond what we do already. Past that, once they get that training, become a firefighter three, which is required, as Chief Swinton said, then they are subjected to an assessment center for a promotional process. During that assessment center, they will handle many different problems by both written and oral board. And during the written, they'll handle some more typical types of problems that they might face during the day. And during the oral assessment, they're in front of a board of assessors they don't know, that all come from different departments, so there's a lot of pressure inside of there. And they're subjected to real-time scenarios where they have to make instant decisions and work through problems that would be an emergency situation. So a lot of pressure there. Following that, they come back and they get to then go through an interview with the chief staff, and from all of those different things, they come up with their promotional score. So I'm happy to say that Kevin was one of the two that finished in the top spots that we had for the promotions this year. So without further ado, I'll present Kevin with this certificate of promotion. This time I'll turn the burger over to Chief Parker.
Don't need that. Just going to have his wife, Ms. Katie, come up and pin his badge on.
You can stream, check yours.
Yes, and you're welcome to the floor. Welcome, Deputy Chief, stay there, that's always easy, or not.
Well, I did one Sunday, had to keep everybody till the care was filled up, so I think I'll be good today, thank you so much.
All right. Then do this kind of step off the side, do what you need to do.
Thank you very much. Circus, come on.
Circus.
My joyful decade. You guys can go out this side, come on. See, now you have something to play with. Oh, you're probably one of mommy's. You a train? Right in front, right in front, right in front.
There you go.
Mom, dad, come on. Look, earrings.
Exactly.
No, I got it, I got it.
Turn back around, everybody else turn over, never. Right here, look at the camera.
You guys coming on? So I know it's a chister, I didn't think I was going.
Train to chis, we don't love you no more. Kids down front.
All right, wave to everybody. No, my fingers are more dangerous. Thank you, thank you. All right, now we go.
Okay, how it always works?
I guess it'll be big for you. No, that's not as good. Thank you, Chief.
Just briefly, we'll sit down, just so that everybody can see. Don't sit there like you don't know.
You're looking nice, Chief.
We worked hard on that.
I believe you, someone did.
So I can't possibly begin to summarize what Paul Bonner has meant to the Mauro Fire Department and the city of Mauro in thirty-five and a half years.
You can try.
I can try, that's what I'm going to do. You're the sixth firefighter to retire since I've been chief. You're the first one that's younger than me. I'm real happy about that. We'll get that out there. Captain Bonner, Paul, started here in nineteen eighty-seven, at the young, young age of nineteen. Came a firefighter, EMT, sergeant, lieutenant, and then captain in two thousand and sixteen. He is a, known as a problem solver. Anything comes up, he's got an answer for it. He can save the city thousands of dollars in truck maintenance over the years by not just calling him a cannon. He gets down, looks at it, figures it out, he gets it fixed. And not just that, anything with stations or anything else, he's just a very good problem solver. On the scene of a fire, EMS call whatever, he was the go-to guy.
Okay, I'm okay, I'm okay. Don't cost somebody some money.
Yes. He has so much institutional knowledge that's going to walk out the door tonight, it's just amazing, it's a huge gap to fill. We will continue to call him, I'm sure, he may block all of our numbers, I don't know, but we'll see how that goes. Paul does above and beyond what's required of the job. Especially on scenes, bad scenes, he is known to stay behind with family members and EMS calls. I know one particular time, a person came up to the station, her husband had been in the car at the rest, and ambulance took him to the hospital, and Paul stayed behind, comforted her, and prayed with her, and that's just something, you can't train anybody how to do that, that's just in person to do it, and Paul has that knack. He has a keen eye for people in distress. Numerous times, he's bought food for people that were down and out, does favors for people. My wife at one time referred to him as her hospital husband. Back when our youngest son was much younger, he was prone to go to the hospital a lot, and I was in the hospital too, and Paul always showed up, this is what he does. And then it wasn't just for my family, it's for everybody. He treats everyone the same, it doesn't matter about race, religion, doesn't matter. Y'all all know we have a very diverse community, but everybody was the same that Paul does. Most of all, I guess, is an example of how to live a full life, how to lead, and how to treat others. So Paul, we have a little ax over here for you.
Looks good, Chief.
And it has a, has a little plaque, I'm going to read what's on the plaque. Captain Paul Bonner, thirty-five years of outstanding service to the residents, visitors, and businesses of the city of Mauro. Hired in nineteen eighty-seven with no fire or EMS training, you became the perfect example of a public servant. Firefighter, EMT, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. Mentor, leader, and friend. So Paul, on behalf of everybody in the fire department, the city, elected officials, residents, and everybody that you've ever helped, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere yet, Paul. We're going to do something just a little. We have a thirty-five years, thirty-five point five service.
Thirty-five years, six months, and three days. Not that anybody's counting.
And we do realize that there's only a handful of other firefighters who have retired with more experience and more work, more years than you. But it's not necessarily fair for any one person to be able to pin you because of the years you serviced the town. So what I'm going to ask, and I don't even know if it's possible, I want every person within this audience to come up behind you and say to behind Paul, and this city is going to basically pin you for thirty-five years of service.
I didn't know how that works, Mr. Mayor.
Little logistical things, I can figure that out. I was surprised when I heard you retired. Don't sit out in the audience, this is definitely a big one for the history department. We got a number of beaters up here.
Who's this guy you guys are talking about?
Let's see how many of these people we can get on here. Keep coming, come on, Kyo, this is for everybody. I want the whole crowd, you're out there, come see y'all. We'll figure out how to get you on.
You've got a long way to go.
We still got a few, we got some room, there's plenty of room.
Do a pano.
Are those pictures any good back there, trouble? Literally, on behalf of the entire city of Mauro, we could not be more proud of the service that you have given us. Please take your board, you got no. So the fire department, please sit up.
So the Fire Department, please sit up.
Now you can't afford the cheese.
I don't think that actually has anything to do with it.
You've got twenty years.
First of all, to be fair, all these years, you're being a role, my different roles, it depends on the way you've done your service, everybody's service. The council, I know y'all work hard, try to make the city where it is, and y'all do a good job. Thank you for supporting the Fire Department and for trying to do the best under different circumstances with COVID and everything that goes on, and trying to do a good job with the city. Everybody thanks you for that, your hard work, your effort. Mr. City Manager, you've done a good job coming in, but thank you for what you've done, sir. Again, I know people come to you problems and this, but y'all have done a good job. And again, as a group, and I personally want to just say one thing. Command staff, y'all have really done an excellent job. Too slim, I'll miss our conversations, I'll have to come in, you'll buy me breakfast or something. But it's been a pleasure. Chief Moss called me on a regular basis talking about trucks and broken them. That's what I was asking about earlier. So you'll have to still call me because I still expect one, at least today, every day. Chief Piper's got two beautiful children, I won't have grandkids yet, so I've enjoyed his grandkids, thank you very much. But bear in mind now, I've adopted them at any point, thank you very much. Anybody here that's in public safety knows that the crew that you have means everything. Well, when I first started, thirty-five plus years ago, Carl DiMarco was on my shift, or I was on his shift. And a nineteen-year-old who I didn't know anything about anything, and he taught me a lot. Some of the things maybe he shouldn't have taught me, but he did. So my probation officer's got some talk. But me and Carl worked together for thirty-five plus years, and we've been gone a couple of years, but a long time, and it was a joy. The crew that's on duty today is not, the shift is not my shift, my shift is working. Mark, I already lost track. But what a great crew. You know, every shift captain, Captain Rollins is sitting there, me and him worked a long time, every captain is gonna say they had the best crew. And if you don't say you have the best crew, then you're the problem. Again, you know, we've talked about this before, but every shift captain says his crew is the best. But I had a great crew that looked after me like I looked after them, and it was a pleasure to work with them all the years. It's a pleasure having, again, a city that's so diverse that the communication is wonderful. You know, just working for this city for all these years has truly been a pleasure. Sylvia, I love you. My wife's standing back there, I can tell you that. Yeah, okay, thank you. Hi, Bessie, thank you. Me, you're awesome. Hi, but out of all these things, I have to take a moment to talk to my bride. I wasn't gonna get emotional, I'm still not gonna do it. Hi, you can't have a job in public safety and be successful without having a rock at home. You know, all the years of missed birthdays, missed Christmases, basketball, or football practice, basketball practice, whatever's going on in your world, church on Sundays, whatever's going on in your world, we're gone every third day. Or in law enforcement, you're gone for twelve hours. You can't do your job sufficiently, you can't worry about what's going on at home. You have a job to do, especially once you get promoted, your decisions reflect on the guys below you. The decisions you make keep them in harm's way or keeps them safe, so you can't be worried about what goes on at home. Laura, you've always been a rock. Whatever I've decided to do in life, from build houses to open a tree business to whatever I've decided to do, you've always been there. You've always been my rock. I love you, I appreciate you, and you're just a hell of a woman, those people.
We will have more of a forward retirement party for Officer Marner, and they've got a couple cases, so look forward to that. Paul, you're a G-Boy. Last thing that we have is a resolution intent dealing with the transfer of the retirement plan administration from the Creedee and Cream, One America, to basically the G Bank. This is, as the city attorney wrote it, the ability to have the discussion, to be able to look at what our options are as we have the potential to move. Without this, this is an acting resolution that allows us to enter into discussions. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? Motion probably seconded, all of those who agree, say aye. Ms. Dean? Ms. Trainor?
May, the resolution was given to the council at eight thirty PM last night. It did not give the council an option to understand what our option on selecting the trustee. And the council are not informed, I am a council member, and I'm not informed to support the idea. But I do understand the need of leaving the current, which is the current trustee, that cannot give a good service that we need.
Ms. Paul?
Hi.
General comments, I got a few, we're gonna have a couple. So comments of the others.
Can I go first? Paul. I'm not making fun of you. I just can't say enough, of course, so many of us can't, but the years that I worked here, which was twenty, how many nights you came and found me working through the night, Jack in his crib, or Jack in high school, whichever. But and just the thing about leaders, or you teach effortlessly, and you don't even mean to. But I just can't imagine how many people in this room could not measure the times that you've spent in their conversation, and you've taught them so much. About what it means to be good, about what it means to be humble, about what it means to not know everything. And that's what you remind me all the time, is you always gave me a different perspective. Sylvia, I know you think you're right, but think about this. And that's an invaluable service that a friend can do for another one. You are obviously an exemplary employee, but mostly to me, you're a dear friend, and I appreciate you as a citizen and a former city manager, your favorite, even John. Or maybe especially.
Other comments? Who's free? So you said we are.
Thank you, Paul. You know, I know when there was a death and we had to call for nine-one-one, even though we knew it wasn't, it was a do not resuscitate. But he still came and gave the support to the spouse, and you know, that was, that just meant so much. That you stayed after everybody left, you stayed there and gave support and made sure that, you know, you gave him Scruggs' phone number and the whole nine yards. So thank you for everything you do, and V for Saturday night for your hard work. Lord have mercy, that was something else. But you know, the city employees here in Mar-a-Lago are just beyond great. So I wanted to always thank you for everything that you do for us citizens, thank you. And council, y'all too. And Mr. Baker, thank you.
Other comments? Hearing the comments from the city council, Ms. Brereton.
I just wanted to say congratulations to our oddities this evening, Tom, Blumberg, Beaver. Congratulations to our good municipal quarters. And I did want to just say thank you, Captain Bonner, for your service, especially for being the type of man that you are. You exposed us to who you are as a person, you connected with hearts, and I really appreciated who you are as a man, who just so happened to be a servant in the Fire Department. Who you are as a person is incomparable, and I appreciate the time and the conversations that we've had, the opportunity to have over the time that I've been on the council. I wanna be like you when I grow up. And thank you to your family. It's just amazing the type of people that we have working here in the City of Mar-a-Lago. We've just got great examples of good people, and I appreciate the service that you all choose to make working here in the city. You really are appreciated, you really, really are appreciated, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Okay. I'm gonna start with your wife, Mrs. Bonner, thank you. Being a mother and a widow, I know what it's like to, as they say, hold down the front, making sure everything is okay, so that he doesn't have to come home and get in another problem or another situation on his back. So thank you for the years that you have made it possible for him to be here for the City of Mar-a-Lago. Paul, I hope you trained somebody to take your place, because we need another Paul, so who's your designated? You have to make sure you let us know who that person is, okay? Because, and you have to come back and finish the training if you're not, the training isn't complete, so that's my request for you. Thank you, and exemplary man, human being. Thank you for your service. And to our other staff, our firefighters, police, other words, I have to give mine to Mr. Brandon over there, because I beg him a lot, so, and I intend to beg some more, so. I just wanted to know that, so yeah, thank you to all of you, we call you all science warriors, thank you.
Ms. Trainor?
Captain Morgan, thank you, congratulations on your retirement, and I am sorry that we didn't put that three days of it in. So, and congratulations on the promotion of Lieutenant Park. Thank you, congratulations on the five-day service for Lieutenant Beaver and certain people. I would like to see, to see you receiving the ten fifteens, so, so, yeah. Thank you everyone for your service. And for the moral resident, Ms. Nova. Thank you for coming with us tonight.
It's been great living here in Mar-a-Lago, and I have a lot of memories.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming here tonight, and allow us to cheer, uh, your kind of be here.
Ms. Paul?
Yes, sir, I would like to thank, I'd say thank you to Ms. Ross for the long, long time resident, moral resident, and best of luck to your future. Thank you again. And second, I would like to say, thank to Captain Bonner, Paul Bonner, for your, for your lifetime of serving in City of Mar-a-Lago. I'm very, we are very appreciative of your service, and thank you also, thank you to your family that supported you, without them, that are supporting the, without the family of those who did our public service. Support, you know, as a, because on behalf of people like that, or want to, to serve the City of Mar-a-Lago, thank you again. Congratulations to our new job, and all the personnel that got promotion today, congratulations to you all, thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to recognize somebody, I believe your dad is United States Air Force? Okay, sir. Will you please stand up? Let's give this gentleman a round. It's important to remember and recognize people who've done a tremendous amount of service, not only for the city, your state, ultimately the United States. And then I look around the room, and I'm also unfortunately old enough to be able to recognize some of the people as well. So we've got, you know, DiMarco over here, we've got Kio over here. And that goes back, and it just says that you stay together kind of as a family, and they continue to come back. Nobody forced me to do that. And that's a pretty good, you know, scenario that talks about how your cities, we have a longtime resident who's been here for a long, long time. It feels like probably just yesterday, but she also brought her entire friends with her, which is great, you know? And if you haven't had a chance to listen to them, you go huh, and really, you can't, you can't listen to that, because it kind of goes out. And then you start to look at the folks like Paul, you know, it literally is, how do you, as a city, as a collective group, thank someone for their dedication and their service? You went to bat many times, you failed very few, and a lot of people in this side of the town actually appreciate that, you know, can be given a lot from that. And that's a tremendous act that they've got, they went through a tremendous effort to be able to show that. And as a city, we're eternally grateful, we really are. Rest of you all, great service, we appreciate you very much, and hope anything else can be good.